This regular meeting of the Mount Horum Area School District Board of Education will come to order. Role call, Danny.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Jessica. Kimberly. Leah.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Solano, can you certify that the meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Let's all rise if we're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a volunteer to read the vision statement.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Jeff.
All Norbury School District partnership with the community dedicated to nurturing, educating, challenging all students, generating and empowering them to be proactive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you very much. Jeff, item 1C, Administration of the Board of Education Oath of Office. The oath of office will be administered in part by Mr. Hannah, who is a former clerk of the board. This is due to a requirement that the administrator of the oath must do so in person. Of course, Leah is our clerk, but she's joining us by video today. So Jim, why don't you have the honors and be first up? You need your piece of paper.
Go ahead. I, Jim Myers, having been elected to the office of the Board of Education for the Mount Horum Area School District, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Jim.
Yes.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, it's your turn.
It is my turn. Ira Heiss, having been elected to the office of Board of Education of the Mount Horum Area School District, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God. Great.
There you are.
Thank you. Danny, would you stand for just 30 seconds, please? This is, this is like, for me, a hugely bittersweet thing. You have done such a great job looking after our kids, representing our kids, representing the community, and have made such an incredible impact on our schools. And on top of it all, you're an incredible colleague and a wonderful friend, and we're gonna, we're really gonna miss the impact that you have on our schools and the impact that you have on each of us. So on behalf of the board, I'm pleased to present you with this plaque that will help you remember the time that you've spent on the board and the commitment that you made to the children, the community, and the school district. And we're just so grateful to be able to call you friends. Thanks very much.
Thank you. The feeling's very mutual. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item 2A, Approval of the Presented or Revised Agenda. Do we have any revisions?
I move, Kimberly.
Second.
Kimberly has moved, and Jeff has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, Approval of the April 5, 2021 Board Meeting Minutes.
I move.
Second.
Jeff has moved, and Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the April 5, 2021 Board Meeting Minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the April 5, 2021 Board Meeting Minutes are approved. Item 3A, School News. Do we see Kate? There she is. Hi, Kate.
Hi, everybody. I hope you're all having a great night. I just have three quick things to share with you all. First off, starting this Monday, actually, all of our students in the district who have chosen to do so are back in person four days a week, which is so exciting as a student. And I just wanted to extend my thanks for myself and my fellow students that we are so, so grateful for the opportunity to finish out the year in person full-time. And as a senior, I am very, very grateful to the school board and everybody who has played a role in getting us to that point. Second off, April is School Library Month, so I just wanted to give my appreciation to all of our amazing library staff. And third, I'm also very excited for this one because it is my senior soccer season starting soon, and the rest of our spring sports are kicking up, as well as our fall sports that have been delayed. They are still going. So as always, if you are looking to support our Vikings, please tune into any of those events. Thank you.
Great report, as usual. Kate, congratulations and good luck for a great season. We'll be, we'll be keeping track of you. That's awesome. Does anyone else have any school news?
I have two items that might be of interest to the community. The first of which is the Mental Health Community Coalition will be meeting tomorrow at 5:15 PM. Mr. Jeff Dunsonberger, who's founder of a group called TUGS, that's Talking, Understanding, Growing, and Supporting. It's a program for mental health awareness. It believes in basic human kindness and how that can cure many issues, especially mental health issues. His emphasis is really on the ever-growing need for mental health care for farmers and all agriculture-related industries. And so we encourage people to join us at 5:15 tomorrow. And then PFLAG, that's a group which promotes the health and well-being of our gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and questioning people, and even their families and friends. Well, they continue to be great partners with our district. And in fact, this Friday, the local chapter of PFLAG will be holding a Day of Silence. Those who've had participated in such events really know how profoundly impactful these days can be. And in addition, a friend to the district, Sue Huntenberg, who often, also happens to be the PFLAG sponsor, she'll be visiting with parents at a roundtable and high school staff this Wednesday. The goal really is to keep communication lines open about the experience of our LGBTQ+ students and offer some additional professional development, and so we're grateful for those continued partnerships.
Great. Thank you. No additional school news, then. We'll move on to item 3B, Citizen Comments. Those who wish to speak should please text their name and address to 608-250-9166. 25, 608-250-9166. Can I ask Dr. Solano?
Yeah.
That number is 608-250-9166. Great. All right, we'll move on. Item 4A, Recommendations and Employment Status Matters. Otherwise, characterized as personnel transactions, we have an addendum that we will draw your attention to. Dr. Solano?
Nothing to add other than what's there. Thank you for mentioning the addendum.
Great, listen to prove.
Second.
Jeff has moved, and Jessica has seconded a motion to approve personnel transactions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Item 5, A, B, and C, the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Jeff has moved, and Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6A, Committee Member Reports, Community and Legislative Engagement Committee. Jessica.
Okay, our committee met on March 22. We discussed two legislative proposals. Part of the budget bill aims to curb teen smoking, vaping, and use of tobacco and nicotine products. So Dr. Solano gave us an update on that. And we also talked about Governor Evers' proposal early. And we specifically talked about how it doesn't really extend the school year. It's kind of shifted in terms of get out. You know, just the same, we would be in school the same amount of days and hours. We also worked on, based on the work that we had done the month previously and this past month, Dr. Solano led us in a jam board activity to help identify advocacy areas. What we wanted to prioritize our workaround. So we identified three areas. Per pupil expenditures, special education funding, and mental health supports. The committee has homework for our meeting, which is next week. We're now gonna work on what our talking points are so that we can then develop letters and other ways we want to advocate around those issues. We briefly talked also about possibly partnering with the School District Equity Committee and how we can support their work. That's sort of an ongoing. Part of the Community Legislative Engagement Committee's work is obviously engagement. So any way that we can help that Equity Committee engage the community, we would like to support their work. So that's an ongoing conversation that we're gonna continue to have. And our next meeting is next Monday at 6:30.
Any questions for Jessica? Awesome, thank you, Jessica. Education, Kimberly.
Thanks, Ron. The Education Committee last met on April 5. Statewide testing continues for our students, and our district should meet the 95% test completion rate the DPI requires. Summer school sign-ups had a strong interest from families, and we're actually at this year. The committee also reviewed survey results from staff on the various tools that they use this year on their virtual platforms. That includes software like Seesaw and Clever. Mrs. Straka will be looking at feedback from staff on these learning products to see what we should continue licensing. Our district's Equity Committee continues to meet monthly, as Jessica alluded to, and there are opportunities for board members to join upcoming learning nights with the Dane County Equity Consortium in May and June. And lastly, Sarah presented a breakdown of curriculum costs for our district because, as you know, we are in our budget season right now, and these figures will factor into our overall fiscal considerations. That's all I have, Ron.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kimberly? Great, thank you, Kimberly. Item 6B, Information and Advocacy Report. Percent of seniors, meaning college board, recommendations for course of study. Mrs. Straka.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Appreciate it. So yeah, so you all received within your board packets this round of information advocacy reports centered on how our students are doing after they leave high school when they graduate. So the first indicator, we're looking at the percentage of seniors who met those college board recommendations. Each year, the UW system releases a report on remediation in math and in English and in reading. And each year, Mount Horum is not listed on the reading report. Any school that has fewer students listed is not even identified. So that's great to hear. However, Mount Horum schools in the state is listed for the math remediation. Has Table 1 up. We're seeing that percentage decrease year over year for the percent of students who require some type of math, early entry-level math course. So that's really nice to see, and we hope to continue that trajectory as well. In turning to, from the UW system, looking at more the technical college system, specifically Madison College, Madison College releases a post-secondary preparedness look. And in looking, they look at math, they look at English, they look at reading, and then they got writing. But I'm gonna focus on math in this case, just to walk through examples. So as you can see in this chart, we have the past five years of students who are recent, or who graduated from Mount Horup High School and then entered Madison College in the year that they entered. And we can see over time, Mount Horum is listed in rows 2 and 4. Yeah, both prepared and not prepared. And then Madison College is listed in rows 1 and 3 of all of those high school graduates who enter Madison College. And as you can see, over time, we are right in line or even above Madison College entrance. 2020 is an interesting year, and I'm doing some more research on 2020 as well because we do see a dip for both Mount Horup graduates as well as Madison College graduates who are prepared. So I'm doing some more work on that, and I hope to come back to the board with some insight on that. I haven't heard back from my contact at Madison College yet, but I wanted to do some more digging as well, because you know, 2020 is a unique year. So moving down to Table 6, which is the next table I'd like to talk through. I had a hypothesis, or I had a wonder. For those students entering Madison College in the year of 2020, what year did they graduate from? Are we seeing a larger leg of students maybe who graduate in the spring and then that following fall go to Madison College? Are some students taking some time? And is that affecting our not-prepared data? So I went back to look at those students. So I looked at those students who graduated June of 2020 and entered Madison College fall of 2020. And of those students did that, we had zero students who were unprepared. So that was interesting to me. And then I looked back, okay, well, what about our 2019 graduates? And we had 28 students there, and eight were not prepared, and so on and so forth. So what I'm doing some more digging on is to see, as students have more maybe gap years, maybe they go seek appointments, maybe they go to some other type of schooling and they enter Madison College a year or two or three years later, how does that affect their preparedness when they take that entrance test in order to get into Madison College? So I'm gonna do some more digging on that as well to see if that is just a trend this year where more of our somewhat recent graduates are entering Madison College in that time between when they had their high schooling to when they're going to see that, they seek that post-secondary testing. Is there a leg, and are they not doing as well in the test because of that? And moving on to looking at them, another look that we look at with this report is the percent of students who enter a four-year and then persist upon that four-year as well. What I want to hone in on tonight, though, is looking at the number of students who enroll in college, whether it's a four-year or a two-year right after high school. And it's interesting because we know 2020 again is a unique year. And we haven't seen a graph like this yet from out of high school students. As you can see here, the purple line, which is the top line, looks at all institutions. So whether it's a two-year or a four-year, the green line looks at the percentage of students who are a four-year college. And the orange line looks at the percentage of students who entered that two-year institution. And as you can see, 2020, we have a dip. And we've typically been, you know, 80%, students enrolled in college after high school. But we do see a dip. So I reached out to a contact that we have at the UW to learn a little bit more, to see what kind of trends they're seeing. And I included that in my report as well. That's, for example, UW-Madison, by design, they had slightly lower, they accepted a slightly lower number of students for various reasons, but I'm sure related to COVID protocols. They also did encompass more students on that waiting list as well. So that was a little bit of a unique thing for Madison College, or for the UW system as well. But then I also wanted to dig a little deeper and talk to our two high school counselors, Satish Kittleston and Carrie Winnicky. And in talking with them, they had a lot of just tough conversations with seniors last year and even students who maybe didn't go off to college but are now seeking support this spring for next fall. And as you can imagine, and maybe you've brought to, or you know, of other students who decided to put college on for hold for a year, maybe they're taking a gap year, maybe they decided to go to work. Because there's so many uncertainties with what we're dealing with, with the pandemic. Whether students were just, didn't want to do virtual learning when they are in their dorm room at college, or maybe they're worried about their own health concerns. Maybe there were some financial implications in their household last spring into the summer. So we're seeing more students this past year, 2020 graduates deciding not to go to college initially. And we'll be taking a closer look at that, especially seeing how this school year impacts college admissions for next year as well. So that was the anomaly, maybe, that we weren't surprised to see. But when we see that raw data, it's interesting as well. And that's all I have for some of my big three points tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? Jessica?
Sarah, do you think that next year, when we're looking at 2021 enrollment, there'll be a way to capture to see if, you know, those students that didn't enroll in 2020 but took a year off, like we guessed, but then, you know, that we can differentiate next year? Like, does many students would have been, you know, who were seniors and graduated and who maybe took a year off to see what the patterns are?
Yeah, it's a great question. For Madison College, I'm able to get that raw data and see student names and see what year they graduated from and then what year they're entering Madison College. So I can definitely do that. As far as that National Clearinghouse data, that last graph that Dr. Solano had up, I'm actually gonna be sitting on a webinar this week to learn more. So I'll see if I could get that raw data as well that we could compare to our infinite campus student lists to see what year they graduated and when they're entering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to item 6C, Information and Advocacy Report, Progress on District's Long Range Facilities Plan and Annual Capital Improvement and Maintenance Report. Mr. DeYoung and Mr. Reed.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see all of you. Each April, as part of our Board Strategic Plan, we get an opportunity to discuss a few different documents relating to facilities and how our Buildings and Grounds team is managing all of various components that make up building envelopes. And so we began this a number of years ago, as you may recall, when the board did develop its new strategic plan. And just as a reference, for a couple of board members, Danny and Jeff, who are part of the BGT Committee, these are documents that the committee discussed and reviewed at their meetings back in February and March. And so there's two sets of documents on Board Docs for us to take a look at. The first one is a long-range facility analysis. This particular one, we described it a number of years ago. It's sort of a report card where we're putting letter grades next to each component of a billing envelope, not only across all of our school buildings, but also for the district office and then our athletic complexes. And so as we talk about this first document, and I'll have Dave step in in just a minute, what we try to do is each winter and spring, as we review where things are at in that building. And you'll notice, based on previous referenda that we've had, how letter grades change significantly. And as you can see, a number of our buildings are in really good shape now as a result of the huge support from our community. So we're always super appreciative of that. The second document, which I'm not gonna get into quite yet, it's actually a set of documents that addresses how our Buildings and Grounds team handles its annual operating budget. Now, even though the two are separate sets of documents, it's important to understand the relationship because as we find ourselves having challenges in certain buildings, as you'll see with the letter grade document that's up on the screen, Dave and his team will need to modify and adjust his regular operating budget each year accordingly. So for example, if we see a significant need in a building, that's something that we need to really address. We need to look and figure out if there's a way that we can fund some of those, either fixes or repairs, or a Band-Aid, depending on the size and scope of the need, just to make sure that we continue to maintain what we can. But again, I can't emphasize enough the incredible support that we receive from our community, and that's why we see some pretty significant letter grades here, you know, As and Bs. Some of them that have some problem letters are just things that we have a need. They're not a surprise. There's things that I'm proud of, number one being that the community supported putting dollars into our school buildings. And, but as we, as we go into the future, obviously, the Early Learning Center and the district office are two areas that continue to rise to the top now that the high school and middle school are done. So with that said, thanks for letting me introduce the topic. Dave Reed, I see him on the screen as well. I'll ask him to highlight some of the major pieces of this first letter grade document, and then we'll go into the second set of documents. Thanks, Dave. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all, and thanks for letting me present this report to you. As Scott said, these past couple of years, we've made some incredible strides forward with upgrading our facilities, most notably the high school and middle school and intermediate center, for that matter. It's been, it's been amazing to get that work done. You can see from the letter grade report here, obviously, the ELC, we haven't put any, any major money into. I have been doing some fixes as they, as my budget allows and as they become a little bit more important. One of those was the walkway that leads from the PC down to the ELC was, was a real ankle breaker. And we were able to, from my, my operating budget, upgrade that to a blacktop surface. It's much nicer, much smoother, that kind of thing. You can see that the roof is still an F. The, we did downgrade the HVAC system from last year's report, mostly because it just, the system itself isn't degrading, although the unit vents that are in the rooms are still the 1968 original issue. Mostly, we just downgraded because it just doesn't have that air conditioning component that we really like to have. Other changes at the PC, there are some hard surfaces that are gonna get repaired yet this spring, so that'll, that'll be nice. At the IC, we downgraded the HVAC system. Without getting into too much detail, we have a building automation system at the IC that is basically obsolete. We cannot buy replacement parts for some, for some of the components, mostly because they run on Windows 97, and trying to find anything that actually works on Windows 97 is becoming impossible. So in my plan, I've been working with a vendor to come up with a plan to upgrade that system, maybe piecemeal. I don't have numbers on that yet, but I know I need to, I need to move forward on with that because if any one of those mini components fails, it's gonna be a tough fix. So that got downgraded. Other things on the report that you can see. Middle school's great, high school's is good. I did change the letter grade on the HVAC at the high school from an I did change the letter grade on the HVAC at the high school from an A to a B. And you may be asking, well, didn't we just get a whole new HVAC system there? And the answer is we got most of the HVAC system. For those of you who may know, and those who don't, there are 10 boilers at the high school. There are, that create heat for, for the building. Six of them are down by the library. Six of them are above the stage, and then four of them are in the new center section of the building. Those are all, the force in the middle are brand new, but the six on each end are 1997 issue, when that, when that upgrade or that addition was put in. Now, that doesn't mean they're in bad shape. They just means that I want to keep it on our radar that, you know, at some point we may need to either refurbish those or replace those. We do PM on those every year. They still, they still run very efficiently and very well, but they are getting a little long in the tooth. So I wanted to keep that on the radar, nothing imminent, just, just to make sure that we don't lose track of that. Moving down, the bus garage still in fine shape around here, not that old of a building. The DO, again, we've got some, we've got some issues we need to face there. It does have a new roof on it. The envelope itself, the siding is getting, getting pretty beat up. The windows are tough shape. The HVAC is in pretty tough shape. Flooring inside is, is well worn. Hard surfaces outside, the, the parking lot is continuing to degrade over the years. At some point, we're going to have to make a decision on what we want to do with that, that structure. New for this year is the sports fields. I thought it might be important to keep those in front of us, too. For the most part, everything's in good shape. But at the bottom, you'll notice there's a practice field shed. There's a couple structures down in the lower practice field that are in pretty tough shape. And I've, I've kind of got it in my, my budget for next year that we should look into replacing that with a garage type structure. That would be a combined use for FIAD and football. That's basically the report card for our buildings and grounds. Does anybody got any questions?
One thing I just want to mention as people are thinking is we are appreciative of the board's support in their strategic plan, allowing us to not only address these items in our budget if it allows, but it also has been very helpful. Most noteworthy, of course, is the referendum over the last few years. Now, obviously, there's experts that come in and provided a wealth of information about studying the envelopes. But we feel like this is a pretty good study for us on the surface to just recognize, you know, big picture items and, and you know, how we, how we need to consider moving forward with additional needs. So on behalf of the team, thank you for allowing us to, to review these documents each and every year.
Any other questions?
So then we have the second set of documents to take a look at. And that's the facility improvements dash maintenance plans that you'll see in board docs. Now, this is a series of, of three different documents. And this pertains specifically to how Dave and his team manage their facility project budget each and every year. And so the way Dave's budget is set up to work with the board is there, there's $130,000 in Dave's operating budget to specifically address things that come up. Either things that he plans for or things that come up unexpectedly. And Dave does a really nice job of, of planning ahead, but you know, facilities, things come up from time to time that you didn't anticipate. And so Dave talks to me regularly about the potential need once in a while of, of changing something. Hey, this came up, we may need to, you know, move this up a year and move something else back a year and so forth. So it does change throughout the year, but nevertheless, this is Dave's sort of long term plan on how to manage his local operating budget each and every year. So Dave, I'll let you, I'll let you take it from here.
All right. Well, yes, so this is where I dream about what we're going to do over the next little while and years one through four are pretty solid. Once you get past that, it's really is speculation about where we can, or where, where things are going to fail next. There's some very large line items as we get down the road, as we think about having to replace the roof at the ELC or putting in a, a new HVAC system that there's probably no way in, you know, that I'm going to ever cover that in my, in my budget. We'll have to probably go to referendum on that. But this year's one through four, I really do kind of look at all those, all those things. And I get requests from buildings for, hey, how about, how about something like this? How about, you know, we really don't like that. For example, one of the things is that in order to turn the soccer lights on, you have to kind of go way over in the corner and you have to climb up, you know, walk up the hill, open up a box and turn a couple of breakers and not very pleasant to do in a driving rain when you're messing with electricity. Should be nice to have better lighting controls. So that's, that's, that's a topic I took up and, you know, we're probably going to get that done this summer sometime so that the lights can be turned off, you know, from the press box or the concession stand like all the other lights. So it's things like that that come up. There's other things that fail. I mean, there's there could be almost anything, but this is my best guess over, you know, over the next four years where I can see my, my local operating budget being spent. And as Scott alluded to, it seems like there's always something that comes up. Something fails that we weren't anticipating. Vendor availability, contractor availability affects whether I could actually get the work done. So yeah, it is, it is a bit of a moving target, but this is, this is my best estimate on where that $130,000 will be spent over the next three years, excuse me, four years.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, can the district office windows wait? Are they in good enough shape to wait until 2223? I mean, I know right now you have to go outside and somebody cranks and somebody pushes and I didn't know how much longer we could keep. If it would, if it would last long enough.
Well, if we go back to the letter grade, the, the windows have already lived, outlived their lifespan. So we're, we're on borrowed time no matter what. I mean, I guess, I guess at some point what I have to do is defeat the, the, the operating mechanism on some windows just to keep them shut. But you're right, they were well past that and we are living on borrowed time with that, with, with that particular component. Can they wait? Yeah, they probably can. Should they wait? Nope.
But you know, Leah, Leah, one option that comes to, to mind for me is I, I'm in the basement part of the building, but when I'm upstairs in the boardroom, you know, it may be something valuable for us to just replace, you know, some of the most common windows that are used. Maybe not in a specific office, but maybe more of a community type room like those boardrooms, you know, there's, there's three sets of windows in the boardroom and that, you know, that certainly would be reasonable to look at versus doing the entire building, not knowing what the future holds.
That's, that's certainly an option. Again, looking for some, you know, for the board to kind of give me some, the nod like, hey, let's, let's, let's go ahead and do this. There's so, there's so many things to do that, you know, the furnaces need to be replaced, the carpeting needs to be replaced. The siding's bad. I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of need at the district office. And as you can see in the budget, I, I tried, I tried to find a little bit here and there to do that. But so much depends on how much longer we're going to inhabit that building. If, if, if the consensus is forever, well, then, then, then it's clear on what we should do. Much like the ELC, if we're going to be there forever, well, then the fixes for me become very clear.
Other questions for Dave or Scott? Anyone have any parting thoughts?
The only thing I have to say again is just thank you for allowing this to be part of strategic planning. It will certainly help us down the road. If the board decides to bring back together the community group that came together a number of years ago for the planning of this, of this past referendum. It's, it's just nice if, if for no other reason, it gives us a great opportunity to be able to keep this on our radar each and every year. And obviously, the buildings and grounds and transportation committee addresses these needs regularly, but to be able to talk about it as a, as a full board is something we're appreciative of.
Can I bang the drum one more time? I'm banging it for a while. This is my last shot. The, the sooner a decision can be made about what the long range plan is for the district office. The better it's going to be in terms of spending taxpayer dollars wisely. It's going to make
Anything else on this topic? Thanks to you both.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item six D, COVID-19 update. Dr. Solano.
Yes, good evening again, board members. A couple of items, just maybe to piggyback on our student report this evening. And we are so grateful that all K-12 students who wanted to attend in person learning were able to do so today for the first time. We recognize and we empathize with those young people who wanted to be in person, but maybe for health related reasons could not be here. I want those students and their families to know you're never far from our thoughts. And we will not be quite a full school community until everyone is back who wants to be back in person. Now, as I referenced in my previous board update, the district has been trying to source vaccine opportunities for students ages 16 and up. And I am pleased to announce tonight that one such opportunity has presented itself. And we've been given access to about 46 first doses of the Pfizer vaccine. We intend to hold a clinic, a voluntary clinic for, in fact, in this very same room. We're looking to do that this Friday afternoon, April the 23rd, between 3:00 and about 4:10, 4:15 PM. Sign up will be on a first come, first served basis and we will require participants to be available at about the same time two weeks from now, which would be May the 7th. As you know, Pfizer is a two dose vaccination. I'll include information and sign up with my board recap tomorrow morning. We're pleased to be able to find ways in which we can partner with the community on this. Now, as previously noted, barring any external order to the contrary, we are still full systems go for a full return five days a week, beginning Wednesday, September 1st, 2021. Even those received, even though receiving the vaccination, I should say, is not a requirement for students to return to in-person learning. We thought it was important to ask virtual only families to share their instructional needs for the upcoming year. And I might just share my screen with you to talk a little bit about what those results pretend. You can see this, okay. These are the numbers that we've received from a survey that was administered and closed out last Friday afternoon. Out of 343 students who completed the survey, we had 31 individuals who requested in-person, excuse me, virtual learning for next year. And you can see the breakout by grade level. 31 accounts for about maybe 1.4% of our students in our, in our school district. And this, I think, is a reliable valid number in that about 85% of respondents that were given the survey were able to respond in time. Now, I caution us to remember that these are only numbers, they're not people. And what I mean by that is every one of those 31 kids has a story behind them. Some of those kids have some real physical needs, maybe even some mental health needs that mean that we really need to think very strongly about whether or not we're able to offer such a service to these, to these beautiful children. We are in the process now of just trying to discern how many of these 31 do have physical ailments that preclude them or we have some kind of health report on file to determine what kind of recommendation we might make to you, the Board of Education. Just looking to my notes, another piece that is important for the board is the fact that we have some important decisions to make in terms of timing. Many people say, well, Steve, why are you asking us this information now? Wouldn't you be asking us this in July or August? And the truth of the matter is, as you well know, someone said it earlier, maybe it was Kimberly, we're in the throes of our budgeting for next year, and these have real budget implications for the upcoming school year in terms of how we might support the children if we elect to move in this direction. Moreover, the board has some decisions to make with regard to teacher contracts. Statutorily, those are required to be sent out no later than May 15th and returned no later than June 15th. And so while we think to this latter point that there are no implications in terms of our teacher contracts now in terms of layoff or reassignment, because we've received as of tonight enough resignations to help us in this cause. We do know that there is a cost. What would that cost be? What would be the kinds of programs we might offer our students who might be in a virtual realm? They might be as different as every grade level that we serve. For example, given the rigor of our students' high school work, it might mean, it might mean I want to work with the high school staff or high school administration and, and teachers. It might mean purchasing seats in a course online for kids in lieu of concurrent teaching. We did concurrent teaching this year and our teachers just did absolutely an amazing job with it. But it is taxing, is extremely taxing. And that's why we've had these Wednesdays off so that people could be working, our kids could be off, our kids, our staff could be working to plan some really meaningful lessons while teaching to a group of students in front of them as well as students behind them. That's not a long term solution. It might mean, might mean that we look at other options for kids in the elementary level. What those options are, I think we'd want to get in touch with our staff at the elementary level and talk that through and offer some recommendations to the board. But we do welcome your feedback as to how and if serving the that have asked for this service. May I, may I answer any questions about this data here tonight? Let me just quickly go back to my notes, if I could, please. Oh, if you don't mind me just mentioning, we've had a successful launch to today with having all of our kids back. And I don't want people to be lulled in a false sense of security that all systems are go in terms of we don't need to be mindful of masks, we don't need to be mindful of physical distancing, nothing could be further than the truth. We have to be vigilant when it comes to these, these things. I encourage people just to continue to have these conversations. I know it's taxing, but it's an important conversation to have. Let's wash our hands. We still are using our disinfectant sprays on tables and things. David and his team have done really an outstanding job of this. But one of the things that we know is true is that even though about 14% of all of our 16 and 17 year olds in Dane County have received the first dose of the vaccination as of Thursday of this past week, there's still only a very small percentage, about 3.4% of our students, 16, 17, 18 year olds who are eligible and have completed the vaccination in its entirety. And that lends itself to some potential issues if people aren't using their good judgment when traveling to events, social distancing and the like, they bring those kids back into our schools and it puts people at risk, not to mention the five variants that are currently out there as well. So let's not be lulled into a So let's not be lulled into a, a false sense of complacency. We're really at a good spot, but it's critically important that we all take heed of the advice that continues to be offered as it relates to good health and hygiene. May I answer any questions?
I know means now, but grade level, but just in general, how many, what's the percentage of our students that are, that are back in school now? It seems like with this last, you know, ability to switch that even more students.
Yeah, the most updated information, I might just turn to Sarah Straka. She helped with actually design of the survey and administration of the survey. Sarah, are you on the call that you could help me to answer that question? What percent of children K-12 would you, would you fix a number to?
Yeah, currently, if we just look at 4K through 12, we're about 18%, 20% if we look at our total student body that are virtual. Yep.
It is important to note about 9% of our all-virtual families right now who received this survey have asked to go all-virtual next year. So when you take that 438 or so students who are all-virtual fourth quarter, only 9% of that pocket of kids feels a need, either for health reasons or for other reasons, to continue in a virtual capacity. So we want to look at the, we want to look at the details behind the numbers. That will provide us, I think, some richer context about what kind of recommendation we might offer the board, please, and thank you.
Steve, do we have any updates on students who left the district in terms of reaching out to them, have any more indicated to what their plans are?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. Between summer school, just to provide context for those who are listening into the call tonight. Paul, there were about 77 FTE students who left the organization to either go home school, go to school in another community, or go to a private school. And I've reached out to every one of those families and continue to do so in the hopes that we can encourage them to come home. And I believe I met about 17 families right now that have said, yeah, we're, we're coming, we're with you. And I suspect there'll be more in the near, in the near future. Mind me, if you don't mind me just going on, just a little bit more on a bird walk. Here's a reason why I think we may want to consider, in addition to this 31, there is a risk that we may be bringing more kids in, but we may be losing some kids too if we don't provide an online platform for them, right? I don't, I, I think it's more about what is the kid need versus the worry about losing the kids. I think there's ways in which we can find, at least through the first semester of next year, a way for us to get to a yes, but it might cost us a few bucks, money well spent,
though. Other questions for Steve? Great, thank you, Steve. Moving on, item 7A, consideration of revision to the district's gradual reopening plan to reflect public health medicine in Dane County's Order Number 15. Dr. Solerino.
Thank you again. As you may remember now, the last time we met, we had just gotten an email hours before the board meeting that Order 15 was in the works, if I remember, if I'm remembering correctly, which I'm sharing a screen with you. And so that necessitates some, some proposals for you. And, and my, my belief is that in order for us to go forward, we need to take a moment just to catch a bead as to where we've been as a board. And so I'm proposing a few suggestions for your consideration tonight. First and foremost, when you look at PHMDC's school requirements, we continue to be in a really good spot as a, as a school district. Our staff are fully trained, students are very adept at keeping their masks on, giving some breaks and the like. Classroom physical distancing is no longer specified now in the new order. It used to be, I think, some language like six feet, and then it went to three feet, and it has always had that tagline that said, "To the greatest extent possible." Well, that, that's not a, a part of the, of the current order any longer. We do think that that's prudent, and to the extent to which we can make that happen, we're going to continue to make it happen. We just feel like it's a good, a good practice to engage in. The other requirements, in case you're just curious, I did link them here for, for people just to see the differences between the word requirement and recommendations. That's a really important distinction to make. You may remember back in January, I want to say maybe January 4th, the Board of Education actually approved a change to the gradual reopening plan that said something like, "We'll follow all Public Health Madison Dane County recommendations." I think it was saved allowing kids to go up to, to travel for athletics. We'll talk more about that morphing in a moment with your permission. Now, here were some of the steps that we had, and I'm pleased to tell you, we're at step four now. Step one had to do with limiting in-person attendance, training our staff, offering that virtual blended, and I'm pleased to tell you that goal has been achieved. In some instances, again, we must be nimble, we can't just be black and white, we need to see gray in the world, unfortunately. This criteria that we had established to move to step two was no longer needed. Why? Because PHMDC changed their targets. And so this, this target has evolved, right? Our, our step two, though, was to, excuse me, to advance to step three was to allow these grade-level clusters. And that's where we've been up until this past, last Monday with K-5, and then today with grades six through 12. And so I'm pleased to tell you that that path has been met. Now, how do we move from step three? I purposely not saying we've met step four and we're there yet, because I believe that there's some things that we need to continue to monitor. We're almost there, we're not quite there yet. And there's some internal benchmarks that I think we need to monitor, and I spoke of those earlier tonight when I said we want to be able to bring back all of our kids within our school community. Let, let's do take a moment, if you don't mind, please, just to talk about this next slide. As I've mentioned earlier, we do intend to return back to school full throttle September the 1st. And we have talked about this issue of complacency. All requirements of PHMDC's order will be honored in our schools, period, full stop. That's what we have been doing. And up to this point, with, with a few exceptions, when we knew that, for example, in March, the board had requested that we look at bringing more kids back in, we began to just look at those recommendations to determine if we could follow all recommendations. Now, to be clear, each recommendation of PHMDC is absolutely vetted with the intention of compliance. I'll repeat that again, each recommendation is absolutely vetted with the intent of compliance. However, we know that there's some internal kinds of on-the-ground issues that sometimes preclude us from fully following those recommendations. And so I'm proposing tonight that the gradual reopening plan pull out the language that says, "We will follow all PHMDC recommendations." To do otherwise really, really places our ability to return in fullness at, in some instances, very small incidences, in jeopardy. Not everything is black and white, is what I'm trying to get at. There needs to be some discernment of the facts, and we need to make certain that we're willing to pivot when we have to. I'm suggesting this as of today at 8:00 PM. Tomorrow, the conditions could change, that would necessitate, are we thinking, especially as we talked about some of those other variants and the like? We need to be responsive and we need to be nimble. And so I'm just asking that we, we stick with what we know is tried and true, the hand cleaning, the masking, keeping your distance and the like. Some have said to me, well, Steve, what, what do you intend for the fall? And my intention is, just as Dr. Fauci had said, it looks like we're going to be wearing masks even into 2022. If it is required by PHMDC, you betcha we're going to do it. Even if it's just recommended, I think it's advisable that we do that, just because we know not all of our children will have access to that vaccine, at least as it stands right now, by September 1st, our little ones in particular. So I, without having a crystal ball, I can't give you a black and white answer. I can tell you that we will study this and will continue to monitor and make recommendations accordingly. And I just ask for the community's continued grace and understanding that this is a very fluid situation. So with that, may I answer any questions you may have or any concerns about what's being proposed tonight?
What revision are you proposing?
We're proposing that we be nimble and we not necessarily follow every one of the recommendations that come down from PHMDC. That was former slide number nine, Rod, of our, of our GRP. In essence, we've done a little of that already, Rod, right? When the board needed the vote back in March to bring kids back. So I should have updated the GRP back then, I didn't.
This is Leah, I have a question. Um, so something that I just found out this week about face coverings is what actually is considered a face covering and what's not. So like soccer started, and my son wanted a gator, well, come to find out that those aren't considered face coverings unless it's double thick or you wear two of them. So I might suggest that maybe we add a link or a description of what a face covering is, because the other ones I've seen a lot of are the ones with the little exhaust valves, and those aren't technically a face covering either. And I, I would have had no idea except that somebody brought it up at soccer and I looked it up.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. That's one of those recommendations from PHMDC. We have, and it's been a while since we've done it, so, but we have a frequently asked questions document on our district's website that talks about what is it and is not acceptable in terms of face covering. I do think we, we dust that off a little bit and we make sure that it's, it's still up to date. So I will definitely make it a point of finding some time to do that.
Fantastic, I forgot about that document, so thank you.
Dr. Solerino, I guess I have one initial concern that every, this seems to me that then every time Public Health Madison Dane County makes a new recommendation as a school board, we're going to have to discuss it, decide whether or not we want to follow it, which, if we had done that this year, I mean, we already discussed this a lot, you know, that, that just concerns me that we're going to have to address every single one.
Thank you for saying that, and, and that's part of that not being black and white. If, if this was a black and white decision, you could just feed it into a computer, the computer can spit out a response. You have to have some level of discernment, and that means communication with Public Health Madison Dane County, communication with other superintendents around the region. I'll give you an example. Public Health Madison Dane County recommends that all kids face the same direction when eating at lunch, right? We had been doing that for as long as we've been open. But we've come to find out through other sources that that is a nice-to-have, but it's not an absolute must-have. And so wherever there's space, we're going to continue to require that students face in the same direction when they're eating lunch. But when we don't have the capacity to do that, because locally we don't have the ability to make that decision, then we just need that flexibility to make it happen. What's nice now, for example, is we have kids who can now go outside and eat lunch. We can afford them opportunities. It's not black and white, it's not hard and fast, it's using good judgment to determine what's happening on the scene that doesn't necessarily mean the board, unless the board wants to, happy to do it as much as you want, but allow the people who are studying it and working with people to find solutions that, that will keep kids and staff safe.
So Steve, this is Diana. I guess I would ask, just as a follow-up to Jessica's question and concern, does that mean that you or the senior leadership team will be discussing any of those decisions you intend to make with public health to determine the efficacy of the procedures from an epidemiology standpoint?
Exactly. We have conversations with public health three times a week, on Monday mornings, Thursday, and Thursday mornings, and then on Friday, all the superintendents in Dane County meet, and we have a number of medical doctors who are on those calls. And we talk with them about, okay, if this happens, what should we do here? And we're very grateful that we're able to get to a really good spot that allows us to have the kids in school. And if conditions change, we need to be nimble enough to alter our path as needed. So yes, in short to your question, we're constantly, constantly having communication. We, even with Janelle Heinrich, I invited her to be a part of our call with superintendents the other day around masking and ban students, for example. So it's, it's constantly communication, grateful they've been wonderful partners with us.
And what do, how do, what distinction do they make between a requirement and a recommendation? And if they're, if they're interpreting, if, if they're telling us that a recommendation is something that's relatively soft, then I don't know that we, that we, we need to do any of this. But I, I'm wondering what, what kind of distinction they're making between a requirement and a recommendation? And does a recommendation carry the weight of law in the same way that we know of a requirement does?
Yeah, a couple of questions to unpack there, thank you, Rod. First, the second of your questions. A recommendation does not carry the weight of law. The order carries the weight of law on whatever requirements they have. We've asked that question. So to the first question, what makes a recommendation a recommendation? I think it's dependent upon a lot of sources, whether or not it's coming from the CDC or Department of Health. It can be the number of vaccinations that are occurring among students. It could be some of the variant matters that we've been reading about in the paper. It could be, let's be honest, the reason why we had an outbreak amongst high school students here, I want to say about a week and a half ago, was because our contact tracing's so good, we were able to discern that it wasn't just our kids, but a lot of kids who went outside the county to participate in a volleyball clinic. And they came back, well, well, they're at the volleyball clinic. I'm not saying it's our kids, but it's kids just in general around the region, they know one another, they have dinner with one another, families go swimming with one another, yada, yada, yada. Not being safe with masks, it creates for a new issue when those kids come back. It's all of those things that kind of feed into what would be a recommendation. Before we ever suggest that we're not going to fully embrace every facet of a recommendation, we always, always talk it through with PHMDC to make certain that our thinking is as sound as it can be based upon the facts at, at the site.
So you're asked, so what you're asking is to abandon what we have now? Yes. And then make local decisions? Because I'm here, I'm hearing different things.
I'm suggesting that our current policy around PHMDC recommendations be vetted with the intention of honoring them, but also where we need to be nimble and identify what are some things within our school community that preclude us from being able to do that. I use the example of the lunchroom kids facing all in one direction. I can do that in three of my buildings, I can't do that in the, in the PC and feed the kids in the amount of time that we have allocated. It's a nice-to-have, it's not a must-have, I think is how you discern it. So yes, we're asking for some seeing gray in, in what is an otherwise evolving situation.
Would it be safe, safe to say that what you're asking for is that we follow Public Health Madison Dane County's recommendations wherever we can, with flexibility to?
To the greatest extent possible.
Yeah, to the greatest extent possible, and where we can to have the flexibility to do something else.
And justify a business reason for why we're not doing it. We certainly would, again, our intent is to honor every recommendation, but there are certain circumstances that preclude us from doing it.
So I guess, so one point of clarification, then, if, in the instances where you determine that it's not reasonable or practical to follow the recommendations. it's not reasonable or practical to follow the recommendation, then is that just a decision that's going to be made at the admin level or is it, Jessica's point, is it going to get discussed?
Well, it can be at the board level if you want. Some of those decisions happen on the fly and we can certainly call special board meetings if you'd like to make those decisions and take those actions. I can do as I have done, and that's to communicate to the board when we have not followed those recommendations. There have been very few and far between. The one I can think of has to do with travel over spring break. Another one has to do with what I just shared with you tonight, which is our decision regarding cafeteria and how we go about feeding kids. Again, I don't see that this is happening a great deal. I do think though that to the extent to which the board wishes to take formal action, and I'm happy to arrange that, I might need you to I might need you to be available for meetings a little bit more on the fly. Because those are decisions that have to be made in proper time.
Another concern that I have as I'm sitting here thinking about it is we just said we have nearly roughly 80% of our students back. And they said that they wanted to be back knowing that we were following Public Health Madison recommendations and guidance. And I'll say, we may or we may not be, for very justified reasons, may just give families a reason to pause, you know? So, concern that I'm having at the moment.
Also worries me that staff, even well-meaning, could just reinterpret what they think is the best in a scenario in an isolated silo because they don't have these formal agency recommendations to lean on. And it may not be the best choice, thinking by themselves.
Yeah, to that point, any kind of change would be communicated out and with our staff as we have all along. Transparency level is very high. Every letter, every survey, every communication with families that I've been a part of has also been communicated to our faculty and staff well ahead of time so that they can help be partners in communicating out what's happening. And we don't make those decisions in isolation. We do dipsticks with our, with our school community, our staff as well.
So I'll just reiterate what Jessica just said. I mean, parents have chosen to send their kids back four days a week with the understanding that we were following guidance from an agency that specializes in public health. I'm struggling a little bit with, with that and with what we've told them and now saying that we're not going to do that, or maybe we will, maybe we won't.
One of the things I, I don't think I heard, Dr. Steve, and I'm a little bit confutled by this myself, but I, one of the things I didn't hear Steve say was we're not going to use any authority that the board would give us on recommendations to take things like masking and distancing and other things like that away. Those are, those are recommendations that I've heard you say, we're going to continue to follow. Is that right?
That's right. And bear in mind, if we elect to not follow the recommendations, then we need to have a conversation about how we're going to feed kids in the ELC and PC starting tomorrow. Because right now, we do have such a small confined space. We do have them physically distanced, but we have them facing one another in some instances. If that level of discernment, that gray versus the black and white is reinforced, then that's okay. I'm good with that. I like to know about it. So that way, we can make arrangements to find other ways to feed the kids in those buildings that wouldn't include the lunchroom. But when the board said to us, you got to have kids come back, that's when we started to realize as we measure them against the recommendations, there are rare incidences, but substantive incidences whereby we needed to make some decisions on the fly. I'm very happy, in fact, I welcome it, if the board would rather have those kinds of decisions held here in an emergency meeting.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but we also have kids who are in some cases in some classrooms going to be closer than six feet.
That's right, because the recommendation is no longer, or requirement, excuse me, the requirement is no longer six feet, three feet, to the greatest extent possible. It's just that we be mindful of keeping our distance. Our practice is, because the board said to us, let's bring the kids back, our practice is to try to maintain that three feet. But in rare circumstances, that may not be happening, in rare circumstances. So that would mean, again, we would need to reconvene and have a conversation about what that looks like. I don't have a lot more square footage. I can't just build it. We want to be able to make certain that we honor the recommendation to the greatest extent possible. It is our intent to comply.
I think maybe some, this is something that Danny kind of was wanting to say earlier. If it is worded in such a way that it is, we intend to follow all recommendations, you know, to the greatest extent possible and in full transparency, we'll let the public know when it's not. So if it's only lunchroom and it's only a few classrooms, then it's really clear that it's not this like general statement of, I mean, the, to the greatest extent possible is so wishy-washy. And, you know, and so then if I was a parent, but as a parent reading that, you know, I don't really know what that means in terms of any of the schools, so that if we can, not that we want to have like ongoing, you know, Google updates or whatever, but some way to be transparent about, you know, here's, here's where we've had to build in some flexibility. Then at least teachers know, parents know, students know, but then it's also clear that we are following them as closely as we can, but we needed some, some, you know, wiggle room in other areas. I don't know.
And that's why
Jessica, actually, that's exactly, oh, sorry, Steve.
Okay, please.
That was exactly what I was just going to say. If we could just understand a little bit better what the gray areas are and so that families can understand that better. And then also, I like the idea of to the fullest extent possible. I think that wording is, yeah, wishy-washy, but at least we are saying we are covering it. But I would like to understand what the gray areas are.
So I don't like that to the greatest extent possible. That means nothing. That means, that means that that sentence means nothing. So we either take a position or we don't. And that's why I'm leaning towards, you know, the board working with, with Dr. Salerno when questions arise. Because otherwise, I mean, we're not, we're either, we're either going to ask folks to, for kids to be masked or not. We're either going to ask for them to be, to be, to practice distancing or we're going to have a darn good reason not to, which is, which is what, one of the, one of the things that, that Dr. Salerno suggested. I think this, to the greatest extent, everybody knew when it was six feet and three feet to the, everybody knew it was a joke. So, so let's not, let's, let's stay away from that. Let's be definitive. What do we want or not? And what, so what I think we should do is identify the process that should be a very transparent process. We should identify the process by which we engage and approve those, those, those those changes that Dr. Salerno wants to make. It's not to make blanket statements that, that don't mean anything, but what's the process? Here's, by the way, here's what you can expect. You can expect that your kids are going to be required to be masked. You're going to expect that your kids are going to be required to be distant. But there may be, there may, as Dr. Salerno has articulated, when it comes to this lunch situation, there may be, and the rationale is so important. This isn't just about ignoring recommendations, right? We got a real problem in terms of how we're, we're feeding, we're feeding kids. So, I don't know, I think, I think this is all about a process that is transparent to the community, that is transparent to teachers, and, and that's what we ought to be sort of thinking through.
And Rod, I think we're kind of saying the same thing, really. I mean, we're saying we want to make sure that everybody understands what those gray areas are. And the first question, frankly, that I'll be asking when we, when we talk about these things is what's the recommendation of public health and what are the reasons why we can't follow it? What are the pros and cons? What's the, what's the, what's the likelihood of transmission in those circumstances? What are the experts saying? Because I'm not an expert.
Dr. Salerno, I know that you don't have a crystal ball, but knowing that all of our students, that we've had the last schedule change for the year, do you think, as we plan for the last quarter here, that there will be many more things that come up that require, you know, oh my, we thought this thing, but we need to change it right now? Versus, we know roughly what the requirement or recommendations are now as we plan for the fall, maybe then we will have to address this and discuss.
You think it's more the fall?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well.
Well, we, right, okay, yeah, I get it.
May I offer a suggestion for the board's consideration? So that way, we continue to be as transparent as possible about the things that are impacting us that is part of our board updates on COVID. I share those with you. Leave a spot for action related to whatever those items might be, and if there are none, there are none. There are going to be some circumstances that might necessitate a quicker discussion, a quicker turnaround time than in between board meetings. And I'd advise that if we could just be available for an emergency meeting, just to discuss that one item. I'd really welcome that.
That's fine by me. Now, the one thing though, I mean, I think, I think this is probably an agenda item for a future meeting, but we've got a when, when we start thinking about September 1st, I mean, that's, that's where I get a little antsy because our predisposition, I think our predisposition has to be the predisposition that, that we've had since this all started, and that is to get kids back in the classroom. And our goal, as I think you've said, it has to be to get, to get those kids back full-time, five, five days a week. Five, five days a week. And so I don't, I mean, one of the things I have to, we have to think about together is what does that, what does the run-up to September 1st look like in terms of how we're going to handle an issue that sort of falls really committed, I think, I think it's the right thing to do to make sure that we're, we're full speed ahead for September 1st, and if there are things along the way, maybe this is the process that we've just discussed is the way to handle them, but we've got to, we've got to stay true to our, at least I'm going to stay true to my predisposition, and that is getting kids back 100%, five days a week.
Thank you for the guidance. This is very helpful, good conversation to be sure.
Steve, I have one more quick question. So I'm looking at the link that is in our gradual reopening plan that talks about the K-12 school requirements and updates. There are six requirements and there are five recommendations. And all of the recommendations that are there are contract tracing, risk mitigation. Where do, where do you find these really specific recommendations about like forward-facing desks? Because I've clicked on a bunch of these links and I haven't seen anything that's been that specific.
Well, that's the beauty of this whole process, Leah, you're exactly right. It's not necessarily within these documents. As you continue to study this and you continue to see what CDC is asking, what DHS is asking, what PHMDC is asking, you begin to discern additional recommendations. And so, no, it's not in this document. It's through conversations. It might be through calls that we have with PHMDC that they say, you know, you really should have your desks all in a row facing, or you really should do X, Y, or Z. And 99% of the time, we're doing it. But in that rare instance, that's what we're talking about tonight.
So then really theoretically, we haven't really told parents we're doing something that we're not. I mean, we're, we said we're following public health and public health has this document. And from what I can tell, we're following all of the requirements and the recommendations. So
Yes.
Yeah. But in our, in our reopening, we say we're going to follow public health and so I mean, so DHS and all of that is, gives us recommendations, but we've never said specifically we're following those, right? I mean, no, it's kind of semantics, but.
This is just maybe the, the high-level recommendations that they're offering. When you, when you study their work and you look on their website, there is more layered in at the, at the closer we get to returning kids back to school. You know, an example of that was travel. When the board told us on January 4th, we were going to have a permit students to travel outside the school district for games and all. That was the only time that we said we weren't going to necessarily follow the recommendation of the, of PHMDC. But then in March, when the board said, you know, we need to, we need to continue to bring our kids back, there were some recommendations that we, we really struggled with because we tried to find a way in which we could meet what the board's new vision was for returning kids back and what PHMDC was saying. And that's that gray area I'm talking about. And I'm grateful that we have an amazing problem-solving group of administrators that helped us make those recommendations. Our staff, they each have their own, each building has their own return to school safety team. They're doing a great job too. So yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot cooking. It's not just something you can do just right at once. Hey, if we had not, if we had not altered our travel plan over spring break, we wouldn't have had school for two weeks after spring break. Because there's no way of us being able to discern, you know, who was traveling. We had no business telling people that they couldn't travel. That's not our place. We had advised them. We continue to educate them about that. But we would not have had enough staff or students that could come back without having had to quarantine, per the recommendation, not the requirement.
So one thing I just like to add parenthetically is, you know, I want to compliment you, Dr. Salerno, on the relationship that you've built with with the Public Health Department. I mean, I think that is a valuable and important one to us, particularly as we sort through issues like the one that, the ones that we've been talking about, obviously, and as we move towards the fall. So thank you for that, for that work.
I hear Kate say that this is the first Monday that we have everyone back who wants to be. Yes, at the timing of this is just rubbing me the wrong way in that regard, right? Like, we have everyone back, yes, you know, welcome, welcome home. We really got to face the big changes now and we need more flexibility. And I just, I feel like that wasn't forth-telling to the parents. When I think about the facilities and system setup and how diligent our staff has been in doing the best they can. Every day when I drop my daughter off at the primary center, those kids are on their circles all the way out to the bus stop. I mean, to say, we have you back today, I think we need to rethink everything. That's what I'm hearing when I'm listening to this conversation, and I know that you don't intend that. But when it's not specific, hold on, when it's not specific enough with these gray areas and okay, even starting then tomorrow, we need to have a new conversation is what I heard, because there's lunchroom problems. It just, it just puts this uneasiness as a parent, well, I don't exactly know what they're going to do.
I think it's a misnomer to say we've got all of these changes. I've just talked about one. And I do anticipate us needing to continue to communicate as we have been through emails, through video chats, through meeting with parents. To say that they didn't know, I, with all due respect, I think that's incorrect. We absolutely have been very transparent with our community. There may be questions out there, maybe someone just missed something along the way. I'll be happy to talk with them. But no, I disagree with that.
So maybe I can try to summarize at least what I heard Jessica and Diana and I, what we're, we're sort of I am and others maybe as well or not, but that, that, we sort of, we sort of, we sort of have talked through a process that will allow us to address the kind of circumstances that Dr. Salerno has identified tonight, that, that we may have that, that we may have to, we may have to react to as we, as we, we move forward for situations like the, the lunch situation is, is clearly a good, good example. And, and my, my, I think, so I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair process. So long as the process remains highly transparent. So that, that, and I, because I, I appreciate, I think it was you, Kimberly, you said earlier that, you know, we, we have an obligation to teachers. We have an obligation to parents. And those two constituent groups in, in particular. And we have to ensure that, that any process that we undertake to deal with these kinds of things is and remains highly, highly transparent. And, and gives, and, and gives people the opportunity to, to give us feedback about the potential, the action that we're, that we're going to potentially take. So as long as, as that condition can be satisfied, I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied with, with the process that we've, that we've talked about where we would, where, where essentially Dr. Salerno would, would, would raise an issue, would tell us that we have to act on, on that issue with the recommendation for a course of action. And we would, we would do that in a, in a regular meeting, an emergency meeting, whatever, whatever the case may be. But again, something that's been, something that is, uh, that is transparent to teachers in the community in particular. And that, that makes, that, that seems to me to be the best, the best way to, to handle this, this kind of, this kind of stuff. I do think, I do think these are issues that the board can't shy away from, that we have to take an active role in. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I agree with that. I don't know if at this point we are making motions or are just.
That's what I'm looking for tonight, is to make a motion to accept this with the changes as presented tonight. And that would be to put in a statement that says, each recommendation is absolutely vetted with the intent of compliance. And that should there be changes that we follow that through with the Board of Education in a, in a meeting.
Please go ahead. No, I was.
That's the motion that you're looking for?
Yes.
Can you say it one more time?
Yes. I'm, I'm asking if the board would be willing to please consider the changes to the gradual reopening plan with the inclusion, updating the language to what I said. And I didn't necessarily include it on the slide that says each recommendation, I read this purposely a couple of times. Each recommendation is absolutely vetted with the intent of compliance. Where a change might occur, it would go before the Board of Education. And I'll add, I could add that to the, to the slide deck.
So I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second. The motion has been, motion that Dr. Salerno articulated has been made by Danny and seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? I actually do have a question as part of discussion. Let's assume that, and let's, let's go to this lunch situation. I, I mean, I assume one of the potential, potential outcomes, if, if we can't, if, if we can't get past that recommendation is that we're, I mean, we're sort of in a, in a spot where we really got to rethink what we redo altogether, right? What, what we're able to do altogether, right? I mean, if we can't, if we can't feed kids, then, I mean, we're in a spot where we got to say, well, geez. I mean, what, what, what's, so what's, what's the, what? I mean, I know what the outcome is in my head. I don't even want it to pass over my lips. But what's, what's the outcome? The outcome is we got to think about different space altogether, maybe, right? Or not being able to do it all together, I would assume.
Well, that's, that's why I referenced this is that we had communicated to families that this is how lunches were going to be served in each of our buildings. And we did that well ahead of time so that people weren't surprised at all.
Right.
Yeah, that's a very real possibility. And that's why we made that decision thinking that was going to be acceptable, acceptable to the board because you told us you wanted the kids back.
Yep, absolutely.
But I didn't come to the board for a, a formal action and I'm happy to do that in the future.
All right, so Danny has, has moved, Jeff, Jeff has seconded the motion that Dr. Salerno has articulated. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye. Aye. Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. And the motion that has been recommended by Dr. Salerno is approved. Item 7B, first reading, consider revisions to policy number 377, intercol, inter-scholastic athletics, referred by the Education Committee on April 5th, 2020. Mrs. Straka.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss, appreciate it. Yeah, bringing to you what used to be just the interscholastic athletics policy. And that was a policy that we had on the books. Last time it was touched was 1979. So it's an oldie but a goodie. And it was a very brief policy. Based on the recommendations from WASB, we had a little bit of work to do. Many of the recommendations are actually listed within our Code of Conduct, which is now mentioned in this policy. So we feel that any type of changes brought up by the WIA or any statutes, we will embed within our, our Code of Conduct, which is again listed in this policy. Another recommendation from WASB was to make sure we had our non-discrimination statement. As we often do with policies, we just refer to that policy 411 instead of restating it. Because then when we change policy 411, we've changed all the policies. So we, we include that information as well as some information or language right after that policy number 411. There's a statement that the lawyers asked that, that we put in. It starts with this policy does not, however, prohibit the district from dot, 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 dot. So we made sure we had that language in there as well. And then the last piece, the previous or the original policy mentioned that the curricular codes could be found within the handbooks at the school offices. But we felt it's time to advance the technology and say that they'll be available on the website as well. So that's where that language came from. That's all I have for this policy, Mr. Heiss.
Thank you. Hold on, don't go too far. Give that system a roll call.
This weekend.
We have everyone present. Danny has moved Jeff to second in a motion to approve policy number 377. Is there any further discussion?
This is Leah, I have a question. Um, so in the news, lots of news about transgenders and athletics. Does us specifically referencing male and female sports prohibit? Or have any? Is there going to be any issues that we're going to have to deal with if we specifically call out male and female sports?
Sir, you got this one or you want me to?
Yeah, I, I do not have an answer at this time, but this is something that we can refer back to WASB and ask that questions as times are changing. And when we went to look at this policy just a month or two ago, that wasn't quite prevalent as it is now. So we can circle back on this if, if that's determined. Dr. Salerno, do you have other information on that?
It's just my understanding that WIAA has only recognized the two genders for athletic purposes, male and female. But I do think your suggestion is a good one. Is maybe let's go back and circle back and just talk with WIAA to make certain we're not missing something.
Danny has withdrawn her motion. Item 7C, first reading, consider revisions to policy 377.2, student participation in high school activities revert by, God bless it, referred by the Education Committee on April 5th, 2021. This is Straka.
Thank you. So as we were looking at policy 377, we thought it was time just to review policy 377.2 as well. Dealing with particularly high school athletics and just making sure that this policy was as contemporary and up to date in our procedures as possible. So Colleen Nessim, who also helped review 377, helped review 377.2 as well. No major substantive changes. We added more of an introductory paragraph about some of our beliefs about high school athletics. And then just changed some language distinguishing competitive versus competition and the levels of student athletics, more, more competitive levels.
Actually, I didn't get to respond to Leah because you moved on with, through the motion, I guess. But Leah, if you go back to the March meeting minutes about locker rooms and genders, you'll see that we actually discussed that there as well. I believe Title IX was brought in at that discussion, if I recall, in the minutes. So there might be a little bit more information there on what the committee talked about too.
Thank you.
Now you can move on. Apologies for interrupting them.
I'm good on, on what I was sharing about 377.2, Mr. Heiss.
Okay, thank you. I will, in the absence of, anyone else? I will move approval of the revisions to policy number 377.2. Danny has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. So it looks like we took out transportation. Are we, was that purpose? It looks like it was purposely removed. So do we not provide transportation anymore for athletics or?
Yeah, Colleen Nessim asks, asks that we consider removing that. We do still offer transportation, but it's not always a guarantee, especially with some of our co-ops. We think of hockey and some other pieces. We're not always for sure having transportation to those. And if it's in the policy, if it's in a policy, it has to happen, correct? So we were just thoughtful in that respect.
Got it. So with the expectation, it's like, if boys' basketball is playing in the Dells, they're going to get on a school bus after school and go. I mean, that's going to be kind of the norm and not transporting is going to be less of the norm? I just hate to take it out and then parents, all of a sudden, then we, parents are like having to take, you know, kids who can't drive yet to sporting events and, you know, just understanding what the expectation is.
Yeah, the, the, the intent is not to change practice. We want to become better in line with practice. So like I said, current practice in a rare instance of certain athletic events or athletic sports, transportation has not been, been provided per the agreement with the families, with the other schools and those kinds of things. So just want to make sure we're fine on our policy.
Policy related to transportation that addresses some of those things like state tournament attendance and the like, that does still continue to offer transportation. We just didn't have it be part of this, this policy. We can reinsert it if you think it's best to do that.
No, but maybe it should be cross-referenced then.
Good idea.
Okay, I'm done with all my questions for now.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Brad, are you going to amend your motion to include the cross-reference change?
That's not, I don't think that's substantive. I don't think it's material. So I would just ask Dr. Dr. Salerno to, I think we can pass it and he can end it, he can add it, unless there's an objection to that.
I just wanted to be clear if you're, if, if we're, what we're approving and what we're voting on.
Great, I have no idea where we are now. Oh, yes, I needed to, I needed to call the roll. Danny? Danny's a yes, Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes, Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica's a yes, Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes, Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes, I am a yes. The yeses are seven, the noes are zero. The revisions to policy number 377.2 are approved. And Dr. Salerno will make the appropriate cross-reference. All right. Item 8A, citizen comments. Those wishing to speak should text their first and last name to 608-250-9166.
Good evening, Jennifer Hess, how are you tonight? Jennifer, can you hear us okay? Jennifer Hess? Jennifer Hess, can you hear us okay?
Sorry, I hit the wrong button.
That's okay, glad to hear you.
I am just wondering if you would consider reopening the survey for the virtual families about their intentions for next year in light of potentially not following the PHMDC recommendations. I have a medically fragile kid that I fully intended to send back anticipating that he would be fully vaccinated and that we would be following all of the recommendations to keep him safe. And just from a personal standpoint, I'm pretty uncomfortable with the idea of doing that now.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Well, there's Dr. Salerno.
See any other public commenters?
No, no others, Dr. Salerno. Okay. Moving on, future, future agenda items? Anything there to take note of?
No.
Item 10, schedule of next meetings. Anything, anything there, Dr. Salerno?
No, at our next meeting, we'll have a reorganization. And at that time, the board will consider their calendar for the next school year.
Great, thank you. Item 11, closed session, excuse me, 11A, contemplated closed session per section 19.85, paragraph one, sub-paragraph E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
So move.
Second.
Jeff has moved and Danny has seconded a motion to move to closed session. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Danny's a yes, Diana?
Yes.
Diana's a yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff's a yes, Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica's a yes, Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes, Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes, I am a yes. The yeses are seven, the noes are zero. The motion carries and we will adjourn to closed session in five minutes. Thank you. The motion carries and we will adjourn to closed session in five minutes. Thank you.